All right. With that, we will call this meeting. Are you ready, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. We will call this January 7th, 2025, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to Order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Good morning, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded in closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard on 96.5 FM KUPU radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 10th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting can be viewed at youtube.com/MetrolCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your county. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And will you all please rise and join me as we have the Sheriff's Honor Guard present the colors.
Detail. Attention. Port arms. Forward march. Detail. Hold. Post. Post colors. Present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Arms. Ready. Face. Forward. March.
No, no.
You may be seated. Thank you. And let's give a hand to our Sacramento County Sheriff's Department Honor. Well, thank you all for being here this morning. Appreciate it. This is one of the more fun meetings that we have during the course of the Board of Supervisors where we get to welcome old friends back and new friends join us. We are going to take things a little bit out of order from our posted agenda. The way this is going to work is we are going to first have our swearing-in ceremony for Districts 3 and District 4 in that order. Then we will have Item 47, the election of the Chair and the Vice Chair, at which time we will then take a 15-minute recess. There will be refreshments outside. That gives our staff an opportunity to make changes to technology. So with that, Madam Chair, would you please call Item 46?
Yes. For your first item, Item 46, this is a ceremonial swearing-in of elected officials. And we have swearing-in of Rich Desmond of the 3rd Supervisorial District by Lisa Desmond.
You are hereby being sworn in for the elected office of Board of Supervisor, 3rd Supervisorial District, County of Sacramento, State of California. On behalf of the County of Sacramento, I, Lisa Desmond, am hereby swearing-in Board of Supervisor, Rich Desmond, of the 3rd Supervisorial District, County of Sacramento.
Perfect.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand and repeat the following statement after me. I, Rich Desmond, do solemnly swear.
I, Rich Desmond, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
You are hereby sworn in before me, Lisa Desmond, this 7th day of January 2025.
Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond, might I remind you to take a look at the clock on either side of the audience here?
Two minutes. Two minutes is what I have. Well, I'll try to keep it under 20. But, you know, because I have to make up for lost time. Remember, I didn't get a chance really to do this, my first swearing-in four years ago. And I apologize for having my back to the crowd. It's so great to see a packed chamber here on a positive day. Usually, we toil in obscurity, and the only time people are here is if they're yelling at us for something or other, usually yelling at me. But, so thank you all for being here. It really is an honor and a privilege to see so many friends who are here today, so many supporters, so many fellow elected officials, family members. It just means so much to me. You know, when I got elected four years ago, I really ran on three main priorities: addressing our homelessness crisis, fixing our roads and transportation infrastructure in unincorporated Sacramento County, and providing more of a voice for the unincorporated county residents that we serve in Sacramento. And I think we've made tremendous progress on all of these fronts. When it comes to homelessness, we've dramatically improved coordination with the city of Sacramento, a level of coordination that I would love to see expand, you know, countywide with other partners and other cities throughout the county. We've dramatically expanded shelters and resources for the homeless, with much more to come, including a very large shelter project in District 3 that I'm very proud of. We've also supported our small businesses and neighborhoods with resources like The Hot Team and Forensic Clean to address criminal activity and blight associated with homeless encampments. You know, this Board has tried very hard to strike that right balance between providing help with people while also making sure we address issues in the community. When it comes to our roadways, we've prioritized maintaining and improving our roads and making them safe for drivers, cyclists, walkers, multimodal roadway users. We've demonstrated, as a Board, we've demonstrated the importance of this issue every year by dedicating precious general fund dollars to building our roadways. And I want to put a finer point on that because we're very unique in terms of local government entities that dedicate general funding to supplement some of the other dedicated funding to roadways. We acknowledge here at the Board that the condition of our roadways in Sacramento County is unacceptable, and it's also very daunting task. And unless we continue this allocation of some additional funding, we're never going to be able to get ahead of the maintenance backlog that we're seeing. And I will continue to push for more roadway improvements throughout Sacramento County. And finally, when it comes to the unincorporated communities, which my colleagues are tired of hearing me talk like a brokered record about the unincorporated communities, one of my biggest priorities was to make sure that I'm out there listening to the members of the community who live in unincorporated Sacramento County. They don't live in a city. They don't have a city government to turn to. They have the county. That's all they have for all of these issues, that we provide them with a voice and that we are more responsive to their needs. And whether it's more pothole, quicker pothole repairs, support for our small businesses, or code enforcement, the county has been doing a lot in these unincorporated areas. And I look at our county exec, Dave DeFonte, here and all the strides we're making with our changes to our development review process in terms of culture and structure and process. We're doing a much better job attracting business, attracting infill housing projects to unincorporated communities, and improving the quality of life in these communities. And I'm not going to let my foot off the gas in the next four years. I'm going to double down on all of these, and I know these are priorities that my colleagues on the Board share with me. Now, I want to thank a few people. And as I was thinking about this and thanking people, I thought to myself, this sounds kind of like a retirement speech. That was the first thought. The second thought was, I knew that Supervisor Kennedy would be very upset with me if I talked too long, so I'll try to be brief. But there's so many people I want to thank and commit to working with you for the next four years to do even more. And first, I want to start with my constituents in District 3 who had the faith in me to represent them for another four years. Now, I suppose they didn't have much of a choice because I didn't have a challenger, but notwithstanding that, I know that, I mean, the gravity of the responsibility is not lost on me. And I am truly honored to represent the constituencies of District 3 and will continue to work very hard for them. Next, I want to thank our county staff, starting at the top with our county exec and our four deputy execs, Sylvester, Dave, Siobhan, and Eric. You know, I've been in government for a long time at the state level, and I've been around a lot of different executive teams. And you are among the best, if not the best, I've ever worked with in terms of just the different skill set, the way you work together, your commitment to public service in this county. So I thank all of you, and it is really a joy to work with every one of you. And I thank you for putting up with me because I do know that not only am I difficult individually, but District 3 is probably the most needy district in terms of, you know, obviously the unincorporated communities that we serve. But it's not just you. It's the department heads. You know, Tim is here, and I work so closely with Ron Vacari from DOT and Emily from our Department of Homeless Services and Housing and Homeless Services. So many department heads that are also just wonderful and dedicated to Sacramento County. And then also down to the staff level in this county, whether it's someone at Waste Management at NARS, or it's a social worker at DCFAS, caseworker at DHA, code enforcement. You know, Sacramento County has a remarkable well of employees who are dedicated to making our communities better. So thank all of them, those who are listening, those who are in the audience today, and thank all of you for your leadership, certainly. Next, I want to thank my staff. I don't know where, they're upstairs. I don't even know if they're down here anymore. Oh, they're there in the back. Thank you for putting up with me. I mean, I know every one of you, you have my back, you keep the negative social media posts from me, by and large, because you know I have not developed that thick skin that a politician should develop yet. But I appreciate so much each and every one of you, and thank you for everything that you do. And then my Board colleagues, you know, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Hume, I've served my first term with all of you, and I consider each one of you a friend. I feel like we've all been, our relationship's been forged in this furnace of local Sacramento politics, and that's a hot furnace sometimes. And, you know, we are not always of singular mind on every issues, but I think we come together, by and large, on the most important issues to make this county a much better place and to be responsive to the constituents that we all serve. And then finally, you know, my family, I was thinking about this, too. I'm so fortunate to have three of my sisters here. I'm the youngest of nine kids, so this is a small contingent of my family. Three of my sisters, one of my great nephews, they went out, and another nephew out there too as well. My daughter Lily's here, and of course, my wife Lisa, who swore me in today. I was thinking that my family, no matter what happens, mistakes I made, they're always behind me. But then I started thinking, most of my family lives in District 3, and they probably complained to me more than anybody about the roads and everything else in the county. But I love you all so much, and it means a great deal to me to have all of you here. My brothers don't have an excuse for not being here, but that's a different story. And with that, I just, you know, thank you again. And I think a lot about the job of a county supervisor in local government. You know, the counties are there for people when the bottom falls out of their lives. You know, our sacred, most important duty as a county supervisor, as a county, is to provide for people in need, to help them improve their lives with the social services that we provide. And we do amazing work in this county. But I think a lot of times, people don't take into account the fact that Sacramento County also oversees the largest municipal government in the county in terms of its 600,000 unincorporated residents. I mean, if they incorporated, that would be the largest city in the city of Sacramento. So we are doing all of the same things that cities are doing on top of our traditional role in providing social services. And it's a tremendous responsibility. It's a lot of work, but it's incredibly fulfilling, and I'm honored and humbled to do it for another four years with all of you. Thank you.
Okay. And then next, we have Rosario Rodriguez, Supervisor of the 4th Supervisorial District. She will be sworn in by her mother, Concepcion Connie Rodriguez, and her son, Giovanni Chamberlain, and her grandson, Antonio Velazquez.
Just, I just want to introduce, this is my mom, who will be swearing me in in Spanish, and my son, Giovanni, and my grandson, Antonio, who will be swearing me in in English.
Rosario, if you would like, you could move the microphones this way, and then you can face the audience because you're going to have plenty of time to talk to us.
What she said in Spanish is she had three daughters, and I am her favorite. She just, she introduced herself, and she is sharing that I am her daughter, my son, Giovanni, and we are four generations in my family here.
You are hereby being sworn in for the elected office of Board of Supervisors, 4th Supervisorial District, County of Sacramento, State of California. On behalf of the County of Sacramento, I, Giovanni Chamberlain.
And Antonio Velazquez.
Are hereby swearing-in Board of Supervisor Rosario Rodriguez of 4th Supervisorial District, County of Sacramento. Please raise your right hand and repeat the following statement after me.
I, Rosario Rodriguez, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I, Rosario Rodriguez, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
You are hereby sworn in before me, Giovanni Chamberlain.
And Antonio Velazquez.
This 7th day of January 2025.
This is my working. Yeah, this is my working. I am so grateful to be here today. I am honored to be elected by the voters of District 4. First, I do want to thank my family because, as many of you know, when you campaign, sometimes it takes the time away from your families. And being able to do visits, my mom came here from San Francisco, and I can't recall the last time I went home to see her. But I am grateful that my son and that my grandson were able to swear me in today. I also want to thank my friends and supporters and organizations that got me to this point. As many of you know, it's a tough journey, and it was a lot of hard work, and I would not have been able to do it with the people that got behind me to get me elected. I am thankful for District 4 residents. I met a lot of great businesses and residents that really shared a lot of the issues that are very similar to what Rich mentioned. I think the resounding issues are very similar in all of the county. I do want to give a shout-out to a man who really helped me along the way, my consultant, who is my mentor, who is a competent tab burg. Tab really, it was a really tough campaign, and we said, we're going to try to win it in the primary, and that was the goal, and that was achieved. And that doesn't happen without a lot of hard work and tough conversations and just really working incredibly hard and tenacious to get to this point. I, lastly, want to give a thank you and a shout-out to Supervisor Sue Frost. When Supervisor Frost was retiring and we had a conversation, and she had asked me, you know, are you ready? It was absolutely, you just are always ready for the next phase. And she gave me her support out the gate, and that, I think, said a lot, and I respect her support and decision in getting me to that, to, you know, that initial support to get my name out to people. And so I hope that she enjoys her retirement in Arkansas. She deserves it. Her and Jack are very good friends, and I am happy that she has, that will retire in a place that she is looking forward to. As I mentioned, I think the issues, really truly as Rich had mentioned, a lot of the issues are the same: homelessness, transportation-related issues, public safety, and economic development for the county. And those are the issues that will become my priority over the next four years as we delve down and make, you know, I mean, I think the county is amazing. As I got elected, I did a rounding of meet-and-greets within the departments, and I can say that the county staff for Sacramento County are exceptional. They are smart, they are driven, they are motivated. I shared quite a bit throughout my time that I worked for 24 years in the corporate world, and you get to see certain things that drive corporations, and that's because they are corporations and they're, you know, not a public sector. But the county is run very similar to the largest healthcare organization that I worked for that is incredibly dynamic. This county has so much opportunity, has, not opportunities, excuse me, has so many incredible, great employees that it is, I can say that the county is in excellent hands. And, let me see here. And then, well, I am very excited to get to work. I am ready to tackle some of the tough issues. I did wait 269 days for this day, and I did, I probably got on people's nerves because my countdown was, you know, on the day. I am looking forward to working with my colleagues. They are incredibly exceptional people who really have a genuine care for this county. And I am looking forward to working with our amazing staff. But lastly, I do want to thank Matt and Vicky and Forrest, who are my team. We had our first team meeting yesterday, and I sat in this office with them, and I thought, I am so fortunate to work with people who are just so knowledgeable and driven and motivated. And so I thank you for being a part of my team, and I am looking forward to serving the District 4 residents, and not just D4, but also when I look at issues, I look at it as a county as a whole. So I thank you for being here today, and I am ready to get to work.
Well, congratulations to both of my colleagues. Rich, it'll be a pleasure to continue working with you, and Rosario, look forward to working closely with you.
Thank you.
With that, that takes us, as I said, we're going to have a 10- to 15-minute recess after our next item. Would you please read the item?
Yes, item 47 is the election of the Board of Supervisors Chairperson and Vice Chairperson.
And the chair will nominate for chair for the 2025-year Supervisor Phil Cerna. And as vice chair, the meteoric rise of Rosario Rodriguez to vice chair.
Unanimous vote.
All right, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure, Board, serving as your chair this past year. And we will now recess, and as I said, there is a reception out in front.
Okay, I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, January 7, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll, I'm talking, 2025?
Yes.
Will you please call the roll and reestablish a quorum?
Yes, Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Cerna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Very good. Before we dive into our agenda, and it's a fairly light one today, I first want to thank my colleagues for trusting me with the gavel for the third time now as chair of this august body. And for those that may not be aware, the role comes with a little extra work, not too much more work during the course of the year. But it's a labor of love that each of us, at some point, gets to rotate in and help lead this board and manage meetings. That's kind of the most important role that we have, that you see fairly often. So with that, I also want to again congratulate our newest member of the board, Supervisor Rosario Rodriguez.
Thank you.
And I want to congratulate again my colleague and friend, Mr. Rich Desmond, on his reelection, again, underscore unchallenged reelection. And very good words, as usual, from him about not just, I think, what our service as supervisors means to him personally and to his district, but I think he really captured quite a bit of what we all feel very deeply and sincerely about our responsibilities that are given to us by the voters and the residents of the district and the county that we have the good fortune to represent. Lastly, I want to sincerely thank my friend and colleague Supervisor Patrick Kennedy for an outstanding job in 2024 as chairman, I believe it was his second rotation. And certainly did a great job, especially in light of some of the unique challenges that kind of tend to present themselves during our year of chairmanship. I had the unique experience of chairing last time in 2020. Of course, that was the lockdown and the pandemic, and so that was probably the most challenging and unique experience one could have in the role of chairman. But certainly Patrick, as usual, did a great job managing meetings and especially infusing his brand of humor, which we all appreciate. And we do need a lot of levity on occasion, dealing with some of the serious matters that we do here. It makes for, you know, a collegial relationship among us. And certainly, I think we all acknowledge Patrick as the one that really gives us thought-provoking things to think of in a humorous context pretty frequently. We are, we're not doing a check presentation, so don't worry, Patrick. But as is customary, we decided, the four of us decided, that we wanted to make sure that he understands our appreciation by contributing, I think, $200 to a charity of his choice. And his charity is Mercy Peddlers. And for those that don't know, Sister Libby, she is a pillar of our community and has been for decades. This is a service organization, a nonprofit, that does great work serving the needs of our area's homeless. And she's been able to kind of incorporate her love for cycling as well as her long legacy of helping serve those that are less fortunate, that unfortunately are living on our streets. And I know Patrick has been extremely supportive, even before he was on the board of Mercy Peddlers, and has been so impressed by their mission that he has actually gone out, I think, more than once to actually peddle with the Mercy Peddlers. So again, thank you, Patrick, for 12 months of great leadership on this board. And with that, I think we're onto our regular agenda.
Yes, we are. Okay, item number one, public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. And you do have a few comments.
Okay, again, I'll remind folks before the clerk calls the two names that we have a limit of two minutes, and we have that in place so that anyone and everyone that wishes to address the board has the opportunity to do so. And again, as a reminder, these are items that are not on our posted agenda, but it is your opportunity to petition this board on any subject you so choose. So first name, please.
Barbara Ram.
Hello, and Happy New Year. I'm Barb Ram, resident of District One, and I wanted to bring to your attention the fact that 2,946 ballots remain uncounted from the November 2024 election. To me, this is unacceptable and should be unacceptable to you as well. I would also like to share my personal experience in the most recent election cycle. During the previous 18 months, I volunteered thousands of hours by canvassing neighborhoods, tabling at events, and hustling for votes in my everyday interactions. What if each of my interactions ended up with 2,946 ballots being cast but were not counted because of a decision made by the voter election staff? What if my 2,946 interactions are boxed up and stored at the county registrar's office on 65th? All of those interactions and voters I let down because their ballots, having been cast, were not counted. I also wanted to bring to your attention a specific interaction with ballot curing and the county voter registrar's office. I knocked on the door in the rain and was greeted by two caregivers for a voter with multiple sclerosis. The caregivers confided in me that they have to put the pen in her hand and assist her so she can make an X. They showed me her California ID card, and the X on the ID card is exactly the same as the X on the form. I assume it was the same X on her ballot envelope. When I brought the signed form back to the staff at the county registrar's office, I was told that, in fact, her ballot should not have had to be verified. I was shocked. And when I asked how many of the 2,946 ballots fell into this category, I was met with silence, calling into question the organization and objectivity of the process. How can we verify these signatures over the next 12 months so we don't run into this situation again? Please let me know next steps, as I believe regulations need to be updated and tightened up so we eliminate or significantly reduce uncounted ballots during any future election.
Great, thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Gabrielle Ingram.
Hi, it's been a while. Congratulations, you two. I saw that really big piece of cake liquid. I started coming here, they were three and five, and I haven't been here in a while. We've been focusing on legislation with Stand Up Sacramento County. I came here to throw caution out as the bird flu spreads and the cases just pop up around the country. I'm most concerned about our food supply. If you look at CDPH, cases are low. There's not a lot of risk right now with human transmission, but food is disappearing from the shelves. And we've had the poultry farm closed, or all the birds euthanized in Wilton, the ramifications in eggs or turkeys or chickens for meat. Dairies around are reporting three-week quarantine. I don't know if that's implemented by USDA, FDA, if the state's even involved. I'm coming here for the county level because there's going to be decisions or things that are going to come across your table to pay attention to on long-term consequences. While we're trying to lower transmission for birds and cows, how is that going to affect us long-term in feeding our people? Dairy milk, if you're keeping a cow closed or lowering lactation for three weeks, you're also going to be dropping the feed that goes into that. That's going to affect hay farmers, right? There's all of these consequences. Cows that aren't open, aren't going to be producing, that's going to lower our beef with the steers. So there's a whole trickle effect, a whole cascade. And it's not just going to be milk and eggs. It's going to be cheese and butter and our baked goods. And so if what we're seeing just local is just a microcosm of what's happening across the state, we're not big ag in Sac County, right? But we have a little bit in what we see across the nation. So there will be choices that will come across your desk soon, likely, if this continues to spread. And we don't want a repeat of 2020 where businesses are wiped out. Now we're looking at farmers, now we're looking at where we're getting our food. So I'm just planting a seed of questions to ask and conversations to have with your agriculture producers as we move forward, should this continue to be a problem. That's all. And again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our off-agenda speakers. Before we move on to our next component part of our agenda, Mr. Villanueva, will you please direct the appropriate staff that is here to have them give their business card to Ms. Ram before she leaves chamber so that she can maybe get some follow-up? I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Okay, we're on to consent matters two through 45. For item four, you're adopting an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 4.36 of the Sacramento County Code relating to massage establishment and providers. You waived reading on this on December 10. For item number seven, I need the board to continue this to January 28. This is to approve the attached resolution delegating authority to the district administrator to negotiate and execute a new lease between the Carmichael Recreation and Park District and the Sacramento Fine Arts Center.
Chair will move. Please.
Unanimous vote. For item number eight, this is to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 16.89, 16.122.35 of the Sacramento County Code relating to fees for affordable housing projects. You waived reading on this on December 10. And for item 16, you're introducing an ordinance amending Title 16, Chapter 16.20 of the Sacramento County Code relating to Sacramento Housing Code, waiving full reading and continuing to January 28 for adoption. And that concludes the clerk's notes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I see that Supervisor Desmond, Supervisors Desmond and Hume are in the queue. We'll start with Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a few comments on item number four and item 21.
Four and 21, I'll read both of those into the record. For item four, I already read that into the record. That's the ordinance relating to the massage establishment. And for item 21, this is a contract for Ansel Hoffman Park overlay project, for bids to be received.
Thank you. And on item four, I think we may have someone in the audience that may comment on this. I heard from a constituent who runs a few massage envy establishments in unincorporated Sacramento County about the ordinance and the issue relating to the manager and the requirements about certification by the manager. I think the new provision requires a new manager to have CAMTC certification, so they have an understanding of their requirements as a massage provider. Chad, I'm wondering if you might be able to come up? Because the concern is by the constituent who runs the massage envy is that this is going to be an onerous requirement placed upon them. I did have a conversation with them that, you know, we've had three open sessions about this massage ordinance, and I don't think any of us up here want to continue the discussion or start over. But can you explain what their concern is and, in your opinion, really how we are dealing with that now with them?
I spoke with this business owners as well. So our current requirement for a massage manager is that they do have a special business license and that they have a certain amount of massage education. The new ordinance would allow those individuals that are currently licensed to be grandfathered in, but it would require new applicants that are either a provider or a massage manager to have a CAMTC certificate. This business has concern about the finite labor pool of individuals that are certified and the concern about continuing to locate individuals to perform that function if the massage manager were to leave, essentially. So our proposal does grandfather in the existing licensees that are performing those functions. The concern from them is really about that labor pool. And so if the board directs that, it's something that we can reexamine as our requirements around the massage manager. But given that it wouldn't cause an immediate impediment on businesses, given that grandfathering requirement, we would hope that we'd move forward today and have some time to reexamine that, whether we should do something alternative to the current proposal and bring it back to the board sometime in the future.
Thank you, Chad. I appreciate that clarification, just to underscore it. Nothing is, as long as they have someone in place that is complying with the existing ordinance, they don't have to make any change, just to want to clarify that. And so I'm certainly prepared to support this when it comes to a vote and when we, after our discussion about the consent calendar. But would actually provide that direction to staff and would like you to come back with some, maybe some ideas for tweaking that or addressing this concern of the larger massage establishments at some point in the future. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Oh, excuse me, Chair, item number 21 also. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
So number 21, Madam Clerk, just right in the record. This is relating to the Ansel Hoffman roadways. I'm looking up at our DOT folks. Just want to thank you very much and thank Liz Bellis and Regional Parks for finally bringing this project to us. And I certainly look forward to those roadways getting paved. I don't know if any of you've driven down to Tarsha's in Ansel Hoffman Park lately, but it's so bad that there's an A-frame sign out there that says, "Rough Road." So this will be much appreciated by me and my constituents in District Three, so thank you.
Is that our sign or their sign?
I actually put the sign up.
All right, thank you Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a comment on item number 20, please.
Item number 20 is a contract, South Watt Avenue Improvement Project, award of bid.
Great, thank you. So first of all, I just want to recognize the eloquent words of Supervisor Desmond as he was reassuming office relative to the struggle, constant struggle to try and keep up with roadway improvements, roadway repair in the state of our roads in Sacramento County. So I see some friends of mine from DOT up there, and I just want to congratulate them that even though the recent resurfacing means that this section or a portion of this section of South Watt is in the best condition I think I've ever seen it in my lifetime, it is wonderful to see the award of this bid to get this project kicked off. And I know that this project was a critical domino relative to some conversations and interactions that will trigger other projects in this part of the county. And so I just want to issue my congratulations and thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other members of the board wish to chime in on the consent? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve. Mr. Chair, pardon me, we have some public comments on item four.
Oh, we do? Okay, all right, very good.
Our first speaker is B.J. Pitts.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I would just like to say thank you for the time that you've given us to work on the massage therapy ordinance. By the way, I'm B.J. Pitts, CMT, and my number is 522. The management manager issue is important. There's the massage therapists and the business side of each business. And not degrading the massage therapist, but they stay in their creative side of their brain much more than they do in the business side. And so that's what they love to do, that's what they like to do. They're not trained in our schooling for management or business. I've had the fortune of being self-employed since I was 20 years old. I won't tell you how long that is. And so having the establishments that have employees, to have their manager go through a massage program as a requirement for the county is quite a bit, because they would have to do that in order to get their CAMTC certificate. And having a manager on the business side doesn't make it less of a managerial position. They know the business, they know how to run a business and work with the owner in running a legal business. We all know it's, we're trying to tighten in on the... We all know it's, we're trying to tighten in on the imposters, but we don't, again, want to degrade the legitimate work. We want to make everything stronger. And so I wasn't quite sure on your statement, Supervisor Desmond, if this will be held over until we can work on it again? Or are you passing it with this segment held back, knowing that it's going to come forward again and go through the process again? And so, thank you. I know this takes lots of time and energy. It's a tough subject, but we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Kimberly Austin.
I am Kimberly Austin, CMTC 68526. Thank you, guys, and thank you to Chad and Laura and his staff for helping us tighten this ordinance up. And thank you, guys, for listening to us and dealing with us. As B.J. said, we go to school to become massage therapists, not managers. I was fortunate, I went to accounting school, actually went to school with Chad to be an accountant. So I understand the business side of things and we're massage therapists. So hopefully you guys will consider looking at the manager requirement and continue to look at the other notes, because another massage therapist wrote in earlier this morning. So I know he's going to catch up with her, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tony Psychotos?
I hope I said that. Did I do that? I did.
My name's Tony Psychotos. I've been a professional massage therapist for over 30 years now. And I want to add my thanks. This was a very carefully considered ordinance that you guys made the time for staff and for us to be able to make it such a good and such a strong ordinance. We are very, very grateful. However, the issue with managers, in addition to Massage Envy's supply argument, is that this is one of those clauses that tries to reach through the actual practice of a professional massage business in order to get it something that is really an issue in commercial sex businesses. You're trying to make it so that you walk into a place and you go, hey, there's commercial sex happening here, that's not a good thing. And suddenly, nobody's a massage therapist, nobody's managing, everybody's a cleaner or a guest. So you want to get at that, and you want to do it in a way that doesn't disrupt the actual practice of massage for actual massage businesses. And this managing requirement does that. It affects personnel decisions, who you can hire. It forces an establishment that might run with one or two people who are both owners now have to go hire somebody who has the required credential in order to manage their own business. So for larger enterprises, this is going to be quite the burden. What I didn't understand is that managers cannot be dealt with in a disciplinary fashion in the same way that owners can. So I think going forward, a good solution would be to find a way to make managers accountable in the same way that owners are, so that once caught, they cannot go to another establishment and do it again. And so a solution that focuses on that, I think, would be the admirable and correct way forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Myers.
I won't belabor the same points as the other people just made, so I'll just add a few additional ones. My name's Aaron Myers. I'm the owner of three Massage Envy's in the unincorporated area in question, along with my business partner Gloria up there. Hi, Glow. So what I'll add is, we've spoke to CAMTC, and even they don't believe that the manager should have this certification. So as an additional point, the actual governing body over the license says, we don't want this, and we don't know why this is in place as a standard. Second thing I'll say is Massage Envy is the largest massage provider in the country. We have over 1,000 locations. We are very stringently monitored. We have processes, we have systems, we have procedures, we're held accountable, we have background checks. We, we do this the right way. And going after Massage Envy is not who I think you're intending to go after with this. I think you're intending to go after a real issue, and we want to be supportive of that issue, but I don't think it's us in this case. And I'm just asking for you guys to think through how to do this, as I think it was Tony just said, without reaching through and causing us management oversight that maybe doesn't need to be there.
Great, thank you. That concludes our speakers for item four. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the consent calendar. On item number four, I just want to clarify my thought process and certainly would welcome any input from my colleagues here, is I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with that today because it includes that grandfather provision. In other words, it should not affect any existing operator right now who is operating lawfully. And then I want to clarify direction or request to staff to come back and, and take into account some of these comments here, but explore other options for how we can address the issue of a massage manager, certainly in the larger establishments. And I know, Tony, you had some great ideas, but creating a whole separate licensure and certification and education, I mean, the county's not going to do that. So I think part of that exploration by Chad and staff is to see maybe what some other jurisdictions are doing to handle this. But again, in the interim, we do have the grandfather provision in there, which gives me comfort in moving forward with this today. So with that, I would move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond and a second by Supervisor Rodriguez. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Item 48, this is County Service Area Number One, Zone Number One, Public Hearing on Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charge for 6125 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard.
Good morning, members of the board. Don Pimentel with County Engineering. The 6125 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard project is located at the southeast corner of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and 42nd Avenue, and consists of the subdivision of a parcel into five subsequent parcels. The project was approved with a tentative parcel map and design review on October 5th, 2023. In response to the project's condition of approval required prior to filing of the parcel map, the project's proponent submitted an application requesting the initiation of a benefit category change process. In response to that request, a ballot notice was mailed to the property owner on November 20th, 2024. Currently, the project's parcels are in the street and safety light non-residential benefit category and is assessed $100, $101.56 annually, which includes 393 feet of public right-of-way. After the benefit category changed to the enhanced street and safety light non-residential category, the increased annual service charge will be approximately $400.64 for the total of the five parcels, divided proportionately for each new parcel's frontage. If there are no questions from the board, we recommend the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimonies, objections and protests, and then close the public hearing and direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
All right, very good, thank you. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, open the public hearing. I don't see anyone approaching the podium, nor do I have speakers' lips. We'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk of the board to please count the ballots.
I have one ballot. And the legal owner is David A. Doggs, parcel number 0370327014, site address 6125 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Sacramento 95824, and they are in favor.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Since there are no majority protests, we would like to move forward, and I'll read in the fill-ins for the resolution. In Section Two, at the close of the tabulation, the board receives zero oral and written protests. In Section Three, at the close of the tabulation, the board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, and 100% was in favor in change of the benefit category, and zero was in opposition of the change of the benefit category.
All right, very good, thank you.
All right, welcome aboard Supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we need a, all right, we have a motion by, was that Supervisor Kenny? And a second by Supervisor Hume, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you.
Item 49, this is County Service Area Number 10, Benefit Zone Number Three, Public Hearing to Establish a Service Charge Within the Sierra Gardens Subdivision.
Good morning, members of the board. Joe Grassick with County Engineering, here to present this item. So the Sierra Gardens subdivision is located south of and adjacent to Florin Road, about 1,300 feet east of Waterman Road, and proposes 159 residential lots. In response to a rezoned condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the establishment of a service charge for County Service Area Number 10, which provides trip reduction services. And in response to that request, a notice and ballot were mailed to the property owner on November 22nd. This item proposes the levy of an annual service charge of $131.54 per single-family residential lot. And if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral objections, testimony and protests, close the public hearing, and directly clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Very good, thank you. I will loosely open the public hearing and ask if there are any speakers in chambers that would like to address the board on this matter. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, ask the clerk of the board to please count the ballots.
I think I have received one ballot.
Moral objections, testimony, protests.
The legal owner is Town Development of Sacramento Incorporated California Corporation, parcel number 06600700090000. Site address Florin Road, Sacramento, California 95829, and they are in favor.
Great, so I will read in the fill-ins for the resolution. In Section Two, at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests. In Section Three, at the close of the tabulation, the board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition.
Great, thank you. With that, I'd entertain a motion if there are no questions by the board members.
I will motion to approve number 40, item number 49.
Okay, it's been moved by Supervisor Rodriguez, seconded by Supervisor Hume, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 50, approval of the 2025-26 federal and state legislative priorities.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. I'm Alicia D. Board, your Governmental Relations and Legislative Officer, here to propose the 25-26 federal and state legislative priorities. The county contracts with state lobbyists Cruz Strategies and Shaw Yoder and Tui Schmelzer Lang on water. Federal firms are Holland and Knight and the Ferguson Group on water to do this work. Today, I will explain the process to create the legislative priorities document, give an overview of the past two years, and a glance into 25-26, provide a brief overview of the changes made to the platform, and look to you for input and approval. Every two years, the board adopts the federal and state legislative priorities, which establish the principles of the board and guide legislative decisions and advocacy made on your behalf. In September 2024, my office reached out to department directors for input on the existing priorities, and in October 2024, we met with departments on document input as well as changes, challenges, needs, and we discussed issues that are important to you. I drafted the document accordingly, and the executive leadership team then reviewed and discussed the draft, and you have the outcome of that work. As for the 2023-24 state overview, my legislative team monitored and weighed in on hundreds of bills and issues relevant to the county, and in that process noted trends such as attempts to reduce funding for critical county services, an increase in unbundled state mandates, owners reporting requirements and without funding, attempts to restructure county programs without county input, less funding opportunities overall. In previous years, county wins were measured by state dollars received. In 23-24, success was measured by defeating and negotiating measures to protect county resources and programs. For example, we were able to sustain county programs after proposed budget reductions this past summer, especially in the areas of social services, probation and public defense programs. We influenced legislation to lessen negative impacts on the county. Some bills were removed after assurances that the county would remain safe. We defeated numerous costly and burdensome bills. On average, a single measure can cost the county tens of millions of dollars. In SB 867, later Prop 4, the Resources Bond, we ensured funding for our parks program, the state's delta levy improvements, and language to ensure that the funding couldn't be used to advance the state's proposed delta conveyance project, which the county opposes. In 2023, we had last minute language removed from the state budget intended to advance that project, and we did a lot more. In 2023-24, on the federal side, the county has ongoing success with community funded project requests, which are also known as earmarks. We were awarded funding for the American River Parkway, the Walnut Grove Water Project, and the Sheriff's Training Facility. Some bills moved. Of note is HR 9076, America's Children and Families Act, which had national support. This was signed over the weekend by the President, and this bill deepens federal support to prevent child welfare system involvement, makes mental health policy improvements and workforce investments. More requests are pending for 2025, and we plan to apply for a new round of earmarks as they're likely to stay with the new administration. Other federal victories include the President's signature of the Water Resources Development Act, 2024 Authorization for the Kasumnas River Multi-Benefit Project, our county effort born out of the winter storms two years ago. This allows the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to conduct studies and construction to improve the waterways. So we thank Congresswoman Doris Matsui and Senator Pidiya for helping us move that forward. We also added language in HR 7659 to remove abandoned derelict vessels in the Delta. Additional appropriation requests are pending, such as funding for California for environmental infrastructure in the $300 million range, and the county will pursue this funding. Our advocates keep us informed weekly on federal funding opportunities, and our departments have been successful in obtaining grant funding. Our advocates also keep us informed on program funding likely to be altered in 2025 with Over, over the next two years, advocates and departments prepare for changes in leadership and potential impacts to the county. We have 30 new state members in the legislature, three are in Sacramento County, and several new to our Delta County partners. State members continue to be a Democratic majority. Yesterday, the governor announced in his 2025-26 budget priorities as economic development, public safety reforms, homelessness and housing, behavioral health accountability, infrastructure spending and education. These are slightly different than what's on the slide here. However, the legislative platform is written to address each of these areas and support the county. This office will continue to share our priorities, especially in these areas, with legislators which begin. We will continue to work with our county partners for stronger advocacy and provide input and testimony to raise the county voice. On state funding, the Legislative Analyst Office projects state budget, the state budget to be fair in 2025, and have operating deficits over the next few years. Yesterday, the governor stated that no new taxes or cuts will be necessary to balance the budget, but we will know more on this, this Friday, the 10th. As for state budget requests, state appropriations in 23-24 have been in the $1 to $2 million range, unlike previous years when the county received a lot more funding. But we will continue to seek funding based on our county needs, and But we will continue to seek funding based on our county needs and with what our legislative offices deem appropriate, given all of this information. Regarding the new Trump administration, we are keeping a close watch on areas likely to be impacted, such as funding for homelessness and housing, public safety, energy and environment, water infrastructure, to name a few. I will keep you informed, as we will know more in the spring when the federal budget is released. Again, the legislative platform is written to support the county in each of these areas, and we will continue to keep our interests front and center with our representatives and our new leadership.
I'm going to interrupt real quick.
Yes.
What I didn't hear you mention there in terms of the Trump administration's likely interest or agenda that may affect the county is immigration. And as I think we're all well aware, here in Sacramento County, we have a fairly dynamic situation in terms of the refugee population, so I'm hopeful that included in kind of the blanket statement that you offered, I know you're not here to recite every single nuanced aspect of what we can expect from the Trump administration, but I assume we are going to keep our thumb on the pulse of immigration as well.
Yes, immigration, sanctuary cities, and how funding is kept by us. And specifically, again, this information went to departments, and they've already been looking at this, specifically the sheriff's department and the airports.
Very good, thank you.
And so, given the recent past and our current state and federal changes, we will continue to protect county resources and preserve local control. In the 2025-26 priorities, your departments helped to identify focus areas and added statements to support sustainability efforts while balancing the need for roads, statements for streamlining sequent NEPA requirements as necessary while still protecting the Delta River. We added a statement on Proposition 1 Behavioral Health Services Act implementation and others to support technological advancements, such as our use of AI, and statements to ensure community safety. We plan to work on measures and budget requests as appropriate and according to the legislative platform over the next two years. And all of this is outlined in detail in your board memo, but this concludes my presentation, and I look to you for input, comments, and approval of the 25-26 platform.
Very good, thank you for the thorough staff report. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Alicia, for the presentation and all your work and the time spent with each of us. You and I had a discussion, you know, a few things, obviously, I support all of these, everything that's in our platform here. But in turn, and I know Audrey, our lobbyist, is out here as well, you and I had a discussion about what I'm seeing, at least in District 3, and I'm sure we're experiencing it countywide, is a lot of jurisdictions providing transportation for people who are unhoused in their community and they're ending up in Sacramento. And the only time Sacramento County does that, and I think other responsible jurisdictions do that, is if we verify the person has a support network, they have resources there, they have a connection there, it's going to benefit the individual. I don't think that's the case with other jurisdictions that are simply just handing out bus vouchers, at least anecdotally, that's what I'm hearing from both our navigators, I know Emily's not here today, but hearing from the social services side and the law enforcement side, that we're seeing a lot. And you'd mentioned to me, I think you mentioned or sent me something, that there may be a bill or a legislative proposal about this, about providing public transport to unsheltered people without kind of establishing this connection, is that accurate?
Yeah, I understand that Santa Cruz County is going to sponsor statewide legislation on that issue to deal with busing over homeless people to different counties and making sure that there's proper requirements.
Okay, so I hope we'll take a look at that, because I mean, I would advocate for us to support that, putting an end to those kinds of practices that don't do any good for the jurisdiction or certainly the individual who's being provided with that transportation. So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I just want to thank you, Alicia, for the work that you do. Obviously, we interface quite a bit relative to the Delta County's coalition and other efforts, and I just think that both between our representation on NACO and our adjacency to the state capitol, that we have access to be a larger voice for our local government partners, and that we hopefully in this year, coming year, can maybe seize on that. I know that we've got some interesting legislation relative to foster care, as well as some of the things that we're trying to do with triage to alternate destination and some of the, involving the healthcare payees. And so I just encourage us to really lean in on that effort, but more importantly than that, I just want to thank you, and I want to thank my colleagues and county staff for the continued support to advocate for investment in the Delta, in Sacramento County, rather than the project that I think would be terribly detrimental to the Delta. And while that shouldn't have to be our fight, and it's not, we're not bearing that fight all by ourselves, you know, I think that, one, aside from the constituency that would be negatively affected, there's an economic aspect for Sacramento County, both with our growers and the agriculture, the recreation that happens in the Delta, but also the ecological threat that it poses to an already strained system. And so I just really appreciate the continued support. I know I've been out there trying to advocate for more forward-thinking projects, and I think we have an opportunity to really try and move the needle here so that California can once again be a beacon of thinking differently, rather than just relying on the same old technology to do the same old thing to the detriment of our natural environment. So, thank you for the continued support.
Very good. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Alicia, for the work that you do. I find it to be incredibly valuable when it comes to the issues that we battle on this end, and so I just wanted to thank you.
Welcome. You're welcome.
All right, very good. Again, thank you for the staff report. Madam Clerk, any speakers on this item?
We do not have any speakers.
All right, very good. Okay, it's been moved by Supervisor Desmond, seconded by Supervisor Rodriguez. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, very good. Next item, please.
Okay, item 51, this is the Budget Priority Focus Groups Presentation and Approved Fiscal Year 2025-26 Budget Priorities.
Good morning, Chair Serna, members of the board. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer, and I'm going to briefly introduce this item and then hand it over to Dave Metz from FM3 Research. And after Dave's presentation, I'll have a brief presentation on the recommended budget priorities. So as you know, the county first engaged FM3 to conduct a budget priorities survey of county residents in 2021, and then a follow-up survey in 2023, as well as focus groups in 2022, and then most recently this past November. And those focus groups were really to get a better understanding of some of the qualitative aspects of resident budget priorities. They help us to both validate and better understand the survey results, as well as refine the survey questions for future surveys. So Dave is here today to present the results of the November 2024 focus groups, and if Metro Cable could pull up his PowerPoint presentation. I will then hand it over to Dave, and then I will come back up after his presentation.
Thank you very much, Amanda, Chair Serna, members of the board. Pleased to be back with you today. I'm Dave Metz from FM3 Research, and I'm going to walk through the highlights of the focus groups that we conducted last fall, and try to put the results of those sessions in the context of the survey research we've done for the county over the course of the last few years, as well as similar research that we've conducted for a number of other large cities on the West Coast, that I think provides a point of comparison for some of the observations that come from these sessions. The findings that I'm sharing today come from a total of four in-person focus groups that were conducted just after the election in mid-November. We had four sessions, all with Sacramento County residents. One was limited to residents of cities. The other was only residents of unincorporated areas within the county. And then we had two sessions that were divided by homeownership, one with homeowners and one with renters. In each session, except for the characteristics that united them, we invited participation from a diverse set of respondents along lines of gender, age, ethnicity, political orientation, and geographic distribution, to make sure that we were getting as diverse and representative a mix of county residents as we could. We excluded those who had some sort of occupational connection to the county for obvious reasons. And this methodology is very similar to the one that we used in the last set of focus groups that we conducted back in 2022. It's important, as we reflect on this research, that unlike a survey, this is qualitative research. As carefully as we selected the 40 or so folks that we talked to, they are not a random sample of all county residents. Their perceptions may be idiosyncratic in some ways and representative in others. And so there's some places in the presentation where I'll quantify their responses to some exercises within the focus groups. We should take those with a grain of salt. The actual hard numbers are not terribly meaningful, but it does give us a sense which direction public opinion tended to focus in some of these sessions. And I will say that the results are very consistent with what we have seen in survey research we've conducted in the county, both for you and then for other clients as well. So, some of the key findings coming from the research are detailed here, and in many respects, what we heard here is similar to what we had heard in previous rounds of focus groups, but with a few new spins that I think are worth noting. First, there is still very low awareness of county government, who represents the residents that we talked to on the Board of Supervisors, exactly what services the county is responsible for, and anything having to do with the county budget, very little detailed public awareness. We saw a number of concerns that really stood out, which weren't terribly surprising. Homelessness and related issues, public substance use, untreated mental health issues, and some aspects of crime were significant concerns, as was the cost of living. Relative to the last set of focus groups that we conducted, we did not hear as much emphasis on public safety, concerns about violent crime and some of those issues. That seemed to have diminished somewhat. But in the discussion around homelessness, there was a marked increase in the level of frustration that the public seemed to be feeling, a sense that this has been a persistent problem in the county for some time, and they were hoping to see more progress than they have seen to date. As much as they feel compassion for residents of the county who are experiencing homelessness themselves, there was a desire to see a more marked change, and frankly, some skepticism, which we'll talk about when we provided them with data, which showed that, according to the point-in-time counts, there actually are fewer people experiencing homelessness in the county than there were a few years ago. One solution that a number of the participants really gravitated toward was the idea of prevention, that the more that we can do to keep residents who are at risk from losing their housing, that it'll be easier, an easier way of reducing the population of people experiencing homelessness than trying to get people back into housing once they have lost it. The other big issue, of course, was the cost of living. That is not unique to Sacramento. We did have a number of participants who said they still thought costs here were more manageable than what they are in the Bay Area, but that they had increased dramatically and that meeting basic day-to-day living expenses was a significant burden. This is not unique to Sacramento County, obviously. This is something that we're hearing all over the country right now. The cost of housing was something that the respondents pointed to as a particular challenge. There was a sense that that had really escalated sharply over the course of the last decade or so. There were a number of different factors that the participants saw as being responsible for increases in housing prices, but they did not focus heavily on the idea that there is a shortage of housing, that there just aren't enough units and supply and demand is driving up price. And that dictated their thinking about what steps government might take to try to mitigate some of the housing cost challenges. Finally, we had some discussion of county infrastructure, and probably the most positive news we heard in the discussions was continued broad appreciation for the regional park system. People feeling like it's a real asset for the community enhances their quality of life, and that parks are overall well-maintained. To the extent that they had concerns about county infrastructure, they largely focused on roads. And that, as you may remember, is something we've seen in past survey and focus group research. So, with that overview, we'll talk a little bit more about some of the details of the findings. You'll see some examples as we go through the presentation here of quotes from some of the participants, which you'll see in the word bubbles that appear on some of these slides. They're intended to just be illustrative of some of the kinds of thinking we heard the participants express. And I should note, one of the reasons that the county has chosen to alternate survey and focus group research over the course of the last couple of years is you learn different things from both of these two methodologies. The nice thing about focus groups is, while we can throw out some questions and provide some ideas for the participants to react to, they really guide the discussion. What's on their minds is what they tell us about, and it gives us the opportunity to hear new concerns bubbling up or understand ways that county residents are thinking about these issues that might not have been what we had anticipated at the start of the discussion. In terms of the overall quality of life, people were still appreciative of the benefits of living in Sacramento, its close proximity to lots of different parts of the state. They feel gives it a good quality of life. Cost of living, while high and rising, not as severe as in many of the other parts of the state. Lot of concern about growth and its impacts on Sacramento County, a sense that there have been a lot of people moving to the region, that that's been a factor in housing costs moving up, and they also think it contributes to the prevalence of more visible homelessness that they see happening in the community. It was notable that the renters, and this was the first time we had a focus group that was composed entirely of renters, were much more pessimistic about almost all aspects of life in the county. Their concern about making ends meet, driven by the cost of rent, I think was a major part of that, and they were less optimistic that they would see some of those fundamental concerns changing in the near term. We'll come back to this issue later in the presentation. We knew this was going to be a central focus, and so we had a section of the discussion that focused specifically on homelessness, but it is worth noting that, without us even raising the subject, it came up very early in the discussion. The first question we asked the participants was to give us a word or phrase that described how they thought things were going in Sacramento County right now, and I think in every single group, someone said homelessness. That was the word or phrase that first came to mind for them in describing the direction of the county. So as I noted at the outset, a little bit of rising frustration around the issue and a desire to see effective solutions put into place, less concern about crime and public safety than what we heard expressed in the focus group sessions two years ago. And even on these issues that they saw as significant challenges for the county, there was a recognition that they are not as severe or intense here in Sacramento County as they are in the Bay Area. And for some of the participants who had lived in the Bay Area previously, they said they had come to Sacramento to get away from some of those challenges and still felt that the county was doing better on some of these issues than its regional peers. So then we turn to the discussion of county government. I wish I could come to you today and say that there has been a revolution over the last couple of years, and the public is really dialed in and paying attention to the work that you all are doing. Sadly, that is not the case, and again, this is true for county government everywhere in the state. Just the division of responsibility between cities, counties, school districts, regional agencies, the state, the public just doesn't quite know how to sort all of that out. Most of them had a rough sense of the services that the county provides. Few of them were able to name the person who represents them on the Board of Supervisors. And when we asked them to rate the performance of county government, they tended to offer middling ratings, and that stemmed less from their understanding and recognition of the things the county had done, that they liked or disliked, and more just a sense of, well, I'm looking out at what's happening in the county, I've got mixed feelings about it, and if I don't know what government's doing, they must be doing kind of a mixed job. That was basically how they came to that assessment. Most of them said that they didn't hear a lot from the county, but acknowledged that they spent very little time themselves seeking out information about what the county is doing on their behalf.
Before you go on to the next slide, we have a question or comment from Supervisor Desmond.
Please just assure me that no one in Arden Arcade or Foothill Farms said that their mayor was Daryl Steinberg, because I'll feel like a complete failure.
No, there were a few people who did think he was on the Board of Supervisors, however. There were a couple, his name got mentioned as...
Real quick, before you proceed, did you happen to do any similar survey-taking immediately post-pandemic, either for us or for other county clients? And did the collective experience that we all went through during the pandemic and the fact that, at least this is me editorializing, that I think we all realize the import of what health officers in particular do, which of course is a county agency, public health? Did that have any long-term bearing that you can speak to about people's maybe small, you know, incremental growth and understanding of what the county does or county government is all about?
Yeah. I wish I could say that I saw concrete evidence that it had, Supervisor, but it frankly didn't come up much in the discussion. The initial round... The initial round of focus groups that we did for the county were in 2022, and frankly, by that point, the pandemic had already receded and the cost of living had risen as a concern. There was a general awareness that the county is responsible for a range of social services for people who live here, but there wasn't a lot of focused discussion of its public health role. I will say, in general, what we're seeing from the public is they're mentally kind of moved on from the pandemic. They don't like to think about it or talk about it, and these other issues consume a lot more of their bandwidth these days.
Sure. Thank you.
So turning to the county budget, again, with relatively limited knowledge and understanding of the county's role, there also wasn't a very clear understanding of the county's budget circumstance. Many either were aware or were able to reason their way to the understanding that the county budget has to be balanced, that unlike the federal government, they don't have the option of literally printing money to meet the government's expenses. There was a mixed sense of whether the county had enough revenue right now to provide the services that county residents want and need. Some people said that the challenges are significant, they probably need more money to address them adequately. Others had an intuitive feeling that there is enough money in the system and that it just needs to be allocated or spent differently. And you'll see a number of examples here of the way people processed their thinking about the county's budget. We had the participants do an exercise, as we have in previous years, where we kind of gave them the role of county budgeters and said, all right, here's $100 of hypothetical county budget money. Here are a number of key topic areas of where the county is responsible for providing services. How would you divide the money between these areas? And the results of that exercise were, I think, informative and suggested a little more recognition from members of the public when they were forced to think about how to divide the money, that it's challenging, that there are a lot of needs. Most people looked at the list of things the county does and says, all of these things are important. And that was reflected in the way they split up the money. Nobody put $0 on, well, I guess one person put $0 on one category, but most people spent a little bit of money on everything. There were few people who spent disproportionate shares of money on one item or the other. There was a sense that all the things the county does are important and they all merit significant investment. That said, they, to the extent that there were differences in how they allocated the dollars, they tended to put more money on things that met with their most significant concerns. Addressing housing, addressing homelessness, addressing core safety concerns tended to be the things, the places where they put more of their money. All of that said, relative to 2022, there was less desire to put budget dollars to public safety than what we saw at that time, and most of that priority then shifted to homelessness instead. For some of the participants, they wanted more investment in social services because they felt like if social services were adequately funded, that might prevent people from becoming homeless and have positive ripple effects on what they saw as the major issue facing the county. And some thought investment in public safety would also have an impact. There were mixed feelings about investment in economic development. Some people were unsure what the county's role was, and for many, they said, we don't have a lack of jobs in the county right now. What we have are a lack of good jobs, jobs that pay enough, that have the kind of benefits that would allow people to feel like they could meet the challenges of the cost of living in the region. There was also a lot of sympathy for small businesses and a lot of desire to support them and make sure that they're able to continue to thrive within Sacramento County. To the extent that there was a place that participants tended to focus less of their budget attention, it was parks. And many hastened to note that that's not because they believe parks are unimportant, but simply because they feel like they're in good shape relative to some of the other areas that the county could fund services in. So we had a number of more detailed questions about homelessness. And, you know, what we saw was, on an encouraging level, I think, a realistic understanding of how challenging a problem this is to solve, that there are multiple factors that lead to the levels of homelessness that the county is facing, that it has roots in the economy and the cost of housing, in public health and public safety concerns, and that there is no silver bullet, no magic button that can be pushed that is going to solve this problem. So that was something that most of the participants recognized. At the same time, there was frustration. They had a feeling that they've heard this talked about over a long period of time. There's a sense that significant resources have been invested, not just by the county, but by other levels of government. And from their perception, they hadn't seen what they saw as a significant change in the issue. They were focused largely, while they did express sympathy for people who were experiencing homelessness, a lot of their comments focused on the impacts that homelessness has on their quality of life, whether that's seeing public drug use, worrying about needles being present at encampments, concerns about illegal dumping, about fires. All of those things they saw as threatening their quality of life and their health and safety, and that was the lens through which they were thinking about the issue. I will say, throughout California, as we've been doing research on this issue in other cities, we have really seen the needle shift a little bit. In communities where there was a real focus on compassion and providing help and support to people experiencing homelessness three or four years ago, we've started to see that shifting in the polling and much more of a focus on enforcement and setting rules and things like that, from the perspective of the community as opposed to the people who are facing the challenge of being unhoused.
In terms of that expressed sentiment, when you cross-tab it, I assume you can cross-tab that against some of the general demographic profiles that these surveys usually involve in terms of wealth and location, that kind of thing. What do we see are some of the common denominators with that sentiment?
Yeah. I think the biggest place that we see a difference is when we sort people by political ideology. Three or four years ago, we would see a big partisan divide, where more conservative members of the community tended to focus more on enforcement, laws, clearing encampments. Those leaning to the left tended to focus more on providing services and compassionate support for people experiencing homelessness. To the extent that things have changed, it's that those on the left have become much more mixed in their sentiments than where they were a few years ago. Divisions by age, gender, and income and other demographics, we haven't seen that as quite as marked a movement, I would say.
So fair to say, waning tolerance?
Yes.
Gotcha. Very good.
In terms of strategies that the county can pursue to address homelessness, we offered the respondents a list of things that the county is doing or could do to try to address homelessness in the region. I'll show you the results of that exercise on the next slide, but here you'll see sort of the overall cast of their responses. As I mentioned at the outset, a lot of enthusiasm for prevention, doing whatever we can to prevent people from losing their housing in the first place and keeping people from experiencing some of the challenges that go along with being unhoused. There was also a desire for long-term solutions, for getting people into permanent housing and increasing the amount of housing that is available for people, to the extent that they prioritize certain populations, and most of them didn't in their initial conversation. But when asked to reflect on it, veterans, seniors, and parents were the populations experiencing homelessness, as the public tended to place the highest priority on helping. So here you'll see a range of strategies that the county might employ. We asked the respondents to rate the importance they would assign to each one on a four-point scale as either extremely very, somewhat, or not important. We're just showing you the top two points on the scale here because there was essentially nothing on this list that the participants dismissed out of hand as being unimportant. It's really just degrees of priority that they assigned to them. And you'll see the one that stands out at the top of the list is providing supportive services to address physical and mental health issues, substance use disorders, and employment. Thirty of our participants, three-quarters of them, rated that extremely important, basically double what we saw for anything else on the list. The next two items, connecting people at risk of falling into homelessness with resources, and then providing more affordable housing. All three of those items were ones that fed under that umbrella of a preventive strategy, and many of the participants articulated that that was their rationale in supporting those three, or prioritizing those three items. Anticipating that the perceptions of what's happening with homelessness may vary from the reality, at least based on objective data that the county has been able to gather, we shared some information with the participants to highlight some of the facts about what's happening with homelessness in the county. What was really striking to people was first, that the point-in-time count had showed a 28% decrease in homelessness over the course of the last few years. Many of the participants were stunned by that figure, and many of them flatly questioned the methodology that would arrive at that. For many of the participants, their perception of homelessness is driven by what they see near them. If there is an encampment near them and it hasn't moved or changed in size, then their perception is nothing is changing, even if at large, at the county level, things are shifting. They were also very surprised to hear that the largest share of people who are unhoused in Sacramento County right now are people who are from Sacramento County. There is a widespread perception among the participants in the focus group that people are bussed to Sacramento County from other jurisdictions that are trying to get unhoused people to leave their communities. I will say that perception is shared by every other community in California. People think it is not members of my community that are experiencing homelessness, these are people who are coming to the community. That is just a misperception that the public has, no less here than in other places. One of the other figures that really stood out was the highly disproportionate share of black residents of Sacramento County that they make up as a share of those who are unhoused, particularly for some of the participants who were themselves black. They were very dismayed to see that, although many of them said that they found that figure to be credible. Also very striking, just parenthetically, to note the number of participants who reported that either they or someone close to them had experienced a period of homelessness at some point in the relatively recent past, and particularly in the renters group, that was a very widespread experience.
Before you go on, if you can keep that other slide, Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, your comments from the, I think, the last slide made me think about this. You were talking more about kind of, I think, some of the demographics and the political ideology, but I'm curious how people's perception about the impacts from homelessness might be different or might vary based on whether they're maybe in the city of Sacramento or unincorporated Sacramento County? Because obviously, there's a lot of factors that influence that, that impact that, a lot of differences between the city of Sacramento and unincorporated. Any sense of that at all?
Yes, it's a very good point, Supervisor, and we definitely, there was a big qualitative difference between those two populations in terms of their thinking about it. For people who lived in Sacramento or in a city that had a significant population of people who were unhoused on the streets, they described it as something that was immediate, that was personal to them, that they saw sort of every day in their day-to-day life. For many of the people who lived in unincorporated areas or some of the suburban areas of the county, they said, this is not something I see happening in my community. It's one of the reasons I'm pleased with the quality of life in my community, but just about everybody has reason to travel to other parts of the county. And so it is something they see and are around, even if it isn't as immediate. But for those who lived in the city of Sacramento, it was a much more sort of top-of-mind, daily source of frustration.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair, for the indulgence. Just to kind of tease out continuing on this theme, given that there seems to be an unawareness of what the county is or is not responsible or what we do, was there an acknowledgement among those respondents as far as the layers of government and the extent to which certain things are addressed by different layers of government and that differs as you move throughout the county?
There was an acknowledgement and understanding that the actions or inactions of every layer of government have contributed to this and played a role. There were some people who pointed to decisions the federal government has made decades ago that played a role in creating the conditions that lead to this. There was not a clear understanding of what the different responsibilities are that each level of government bears. But by no means was this something where people were pointing to the county and saying it is the county's responsibility. In fact, they were much more likely to think about their city government, which they tend to be more familiar with as sort of their first, you know, the sort of the first level of accountability that they would point to. But absolutely, they recognized that this cuts across all of those jurisdictions. All right, so on issues relating to the cost of living, we asked people to tell us what were the biggest factors that were concerns for them when it came to the cost of living, and a lot of the participants just said, everything. Everything's expensive. Groceries are expensive. Gas is expensive. Utilities are expensive. Housing is expensive. And many, especially in the renters group, argued that wages were not keeping up with the pace of increase in those day-to-day expenses and that that was, you know, even if they got a raise, they felt like it was immediately eaten up by what inflation has done to the many, many things that they have to buy on a day-to-day basis. We focused in the renters group a little bit about the issue of housing costs and asked many of the renters if they aspired to own a home and if they were confident that they could own a home in Sacramento County someday. And encouragingly, most of them told us they thought they could. They didn't think it was going to happen sometime soon, but they didn't see it as something that was unattainable. And frankly, relative to what we see in statewide polling data in California, where the vast majority of renters say they have almost given up on the idea of homeownership, that was somewhat encouraging to see, although obviously a very small sample size. It was very hard for the participants to think of things that county government could do to really change the big picture on affordability. And I think that's probably a fair reflection of, you know, what is driving many of these cost increases. Rent control was probably the first thing that most of the participants mentioned, but I think that was simply because that was sort of the first regulatory idea that they thought government might be able to implement to address one of the key expenses that they were concerned about. Finally, we had some questions about infrastructure. We, as anticipated, had to focus the participants on which infrastructure the county is responsible for versus what their local city might be responsible for. And to clarify it, we showed them maps of regional parks, as well as a map of the road system throughout the county, highlighted the areas that the county was responsible for versus the city. Most of the participants weren't clear on those divisions to begin with, but when they saw them, roads were really the thing that they focused on. They felt in many cases that city roads might be better maintained than some county roads. It wasn't hard for them to name some specific intersections or stretches of road that they thought were in particular need of some attention. They didn't have any concern about county buildings when we asked about them. They said, I don't have cause to spend a lot of time in buildings that the county owns or maintains outside of the parks or libraries, but they're seem to be in good shape. And parks, again, people really recognize as being one of the sort of crown jewels of the services that county government provides. So that takes us to the conclusions that are summarized on this slide. I won't belabor a lot of the points that we've gone through over the course of the presentation, but I will highlight those final two budgets, which is, those final two bullets, which have to deal with how people learn about the county budget. Obviously, there's a gap in knowledge there between what the public wants done and what they understand about what the county is doing. We asked them how they would like to get information about what's going on in county government or with the county budget. Most said that an email or a newsletter would be the best way to get them information. A number did mention that they received communications from their supervisor that provided periodic updates on what was going on in county budget and county government, and that they found that appealing and helpful. Realistically, though, most acknowledged that they were unlikely to be highly engaged themselves as citizens in decisions about the county budget. And when we asked them how they learn about issues that are affecting the community, you'll see in that final bullet, some of the places they were most likely to list as places they would either turn to for information or might expect to hear something if there were important issues that should be brought to their attention. So with that, I'll just have, perhaps leave this up here as we turn to questions. We closed the sessions in the focus groups, asking people to write down some thoughts about what they would like the county to focus on when making decisions about the county budget. And here are some of the things that the participants offered, and just to give you a sense of how they articulated them and the kinds of things that are on their minds. With that, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Very good. Thank you for the thorough presentation. We do have some questions. We'll start with Supervisor Rodriguez.
Hello. Sorry, I missed your name. What is it?
David Metz.
David. David, your feedback on the information that you presented today is right on the money with what people are saying out in the communities. I have been, I just have conversations with anybody, anywhere, and I'm always curious about what can, I come from a city council, where I always was curious, what can we do better in general? What are some of the issues? And in realities, I think it's exactly what you have listed here. You know, so many times people come here and they move to the Sacramento area because they want to come to a smaller community. And I think the pandemic was a driver of, you know, Sacramento was a third in the nation for people to want to come because it was small and quaint, there were cities, and then they moved. And then they move here, and four years later, there are cities that are booming and the growth is, you know, is on a fast track. And so people are saying, you know, "I moved here for a small-town feel, but it's now becoming a city." That is something I hear from so many people, and even people in my own neighborhood. But it's interesting how, you know, I don't think people ask the question when they're looking to move, what is the projection of that city? What are they expecting to be like in the next 20 years? And I think if that question were to come about, then people would be more aware of, "I'm going to move to a city that is going to continue to explode." And the truth is, we have a housing crisis. The issue is, it is a crisis, and we don't have enough for people, and that's part of the problem, I think, when it comes to the issue when people say, with housing and accessibility, you know, I hear from so many native Sacramentoans that they are now priced out of the market. And when you look at home sales in comparison to just four years ago, it has grown exponentially that I can see how people feel that they no longer can afford a home here. And so, you know, it's, so it's just very interesting. I think the issue with homelessness, you know, I think that there's definitely a lack of integrity on the data that was obtained related to the pick count. And when you look at the numbers, that there's, you know, been a reduction, almost everybody says, "Oh, there's no way that is, because I continue to see what I see in the streets." You know, it's interesting when you hear the feedback that everything is expensive. I mean, I could probably personally, probably agree to that, that everything in my life has become so much more expensive. And so, yeah, I just think the information that you presented is really, truly hit the nail on the head in terms of what people are saying out there. But it is positive to hear that renters are saying that there's a potential for them to potentially one day own a home. I think, you know, I'm a big believer, and I tell these young people, "Throw your money into your 401K and then buy a home in about five or six, you know, 10 years. At least it gives you something that you can, you know," because homeownership, to me, is really important. And I think some of the concerns that I have about the growth that is taking place is that we're creating housing through apartments, but that's not solving the issue of people getting into homes and creating homeownership. And so anyways, thank you for the fantastic presentation. Excellent information.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
My questions are not for David, if that matters.
Okay. Any questions for David Wise at the podium? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I did want to just point out before I dig into the meat of my comments here, relative to this focus group exercise, you know, as it being a temperature check to make sure that our budget priorities are in line with what we thought the public is wanting from us. And something that I think was called out by David's presentation and that the Chair even made comment is that the attitude towards homelessness relative to sort of the tolerance of how it affects other people's lives. And so I think what we've been talking about from this diocese and some of the things that we've been trying to do is saying that, to the extent, whether actively or passively, other people going about their daily lives is negatively affected, that's a problem that needs to be addressed. And so I commend the work that's been happening, and I hope that that continues. But I do want to say that as far as how people sort of parse out where the solutions lay relative to housing and the provision of services, we rely a lot on other partners to do those things. The provision of services is a lot within the county and contracted county services, but the tracking, if you will, of the acceptance and the contacts and how effective we are being at getting people to participate and commit to seeking that help, I feel like we're a little bit out there in the dark. And so I think we can tighten that, and I think that we are spending so much money on permanent supportive housing or other things that simply pluck the most extreme cases and put them out of sight and without any provision of help. And so that's why I asked the question about the layers of government, because I'll say it again, as I've been railing for, I don't know, probably since taking the seat, I think that the housing first, that forbids funds, certain funds to be used for programs that have anything other than simply a housing focus. There can be no job training, no mental health, that this is all entirely voluntary, is an issue, because there's nothing compassionate about letting people who maybe don't have the mental wherewithal and/or have a stack of things that have happened in their lives, that that step of committing to wanting to get help to knowing that there is a better life out there and having the hope to believe in it, trusting them to make that decision on any given day when they've got 30 other things they're worried about right then, it just is a hard lift to do. So I think that's an issue, and I'm going to keep saying it until or unless people change. But that's not really what I wanted to talk about today. What I want to talk about is the actual, the budget priorities as laid out. And I think it's very interesting the way they're written and the way they're sort of clumped. And I look at them like this, is budget priority number one is what we have to do. Okay? There are rules, there are mandates, there are things that is expected of us, and this is like, no matter what, this is where the rubber meets the road, and this expenditures must happen. Rule, item number three, or pool number three, I see as more as what we want to do. If there's extra money out there, these are the things that we really need to lean into and do better and focus on. And then item number two, for me, there's an aspect of that that is what we ought to do. And it talks about optimizing the use of county resources informed by community priorities, which is what we just did this exercise to test, improving effectiveness and efficacy where possible. Optimizing is a conscious process. And so I just want to point out, I had some questions recently about a procedural process, and the only reasoning and justification that was given to me basically played out and amounted to that that's how we're used to doing it. And in organizational culture, that is an insidious and contagious fallback crutch to say that's the way we've always done it, as a justification for why we're doing things. It stifles innovation, it discourages critical thinking, and it does not embrace continuous improvement. And the reason why I preach continuous improvement goes back to the old saying that if you shoot for the moon, even if you miss, you land amongst the stars. And if we are not actively engaged in why we do things, is that the right way to do things? Is there a different way to do things? And what are the unintended consequences if we just rotefully go about continuing to do it the way that we've done it? Then I don't see us really embracing that sort of culture change that we're trying to establish and really doing the most with what we have. And it's a reason that tools like zero-based budgeting and other things that cause us to examine, is this the best we can be doing? And so this is more of an opinion piece than necessarily direction or questions, but I just wanted to throw that out into the ether. Thank you.
I thought it was, you're lost in space, not you're amongst the stars. All right, very good. Thank you. Amanda, did you have any concluding remarks?
I do actually have a second, a whole second presentation, which Supervisor Hume has given me a fabulous introduction to, and I will try to go through very briefly, but really just to kind of, I think, maybe sort of, sort of set the stage and provide some context for those priorities. And I'll react, I think, a bit to your comments, Supervisor Hume, as I address those. That's okay. So really, I will just, I will go through this quite quickly. I think, as you all know, the whole reason that we engage FM3 to do the surveys and the focus groups is to ensure that our budget is reflective of and aligned with the community's priorities. So as I mentioned earlier, going back to 2021, that's when we started this work, and the budget priorities were first adopted in advance of the fiscal year '22, '23 budget process. So we're here today to talk about what those priorities will be for the '25, '26 budget process, and really, for the last three years, those priorities have guided the budget recommendations. And we have had substantial new and expanded investments in the priority focus areas that were identified of homelessness, behavioral health, and roads. And as you just heard from Dave, you know, the findings of the 2024 focus groups are very consistent with the earlier research efforts, and for that reason, we are recommending the same budget priorities for '25, '26 to continue to build on those investments. Just as a reminder, in addition to the surveys and focus groups, there are other elements of the county's budget outreach and engagement plan, again, that we've been implementing since 2021. So a big part of that really is public education, you know, so despite the fact that, you know, we still have a ways to go in terms of educating the public, we have provided some enhanced tools, including we do a budget workshop each year. So most recently, that budget workshop, public budget workshop, was held on December 12. We also have a budget in brief document, which is a very high-level summary of the county's budget, available on our website, and a budget explorer tool for people who want to dig more into the details on our website. We, departments, conduct outreach with the county's advisory boards and commissions that helps inform the survey questions and also department budget requests. And then, of course, as we've mentioned, the budget priority surveys, and then these focus groups in intervening years, which really help us to validate and understand the surveys, ask better survey questions next time, and ensure that we're not missing anything. So in terms of that priority framework, and really, again, the purpose of which is to guide the budget process, first, I want to make sure that we're being clear that this is, these priorities apply to the use of general fund discretionary resources, right? The money over which the county has discretion and control. And Supervisor Hume, you're exactly right. It's sort of, you know, the priorities are organized into three buckets, essentially. So the first is our compliance obligations and policy commitments, the things that we have to do. Then the second, where we say optimizing the use of resources budgeted for existing programs, this really is looking at what we're already doing, making sure we're doing it most effectively, and also informed by community priorities, so asking those questions that you talked about. And then the third is looking at new or enhanced programs and making sure that we're focusing on the most critical and urgent needs, as identified in the surveys and the focus groups. And we've looked at both the countywide and unincorporated focus areas, recognizing, again, that the county plays a different role in the unincorporated areas. So the recommended priorities for '25, '26, which are unchanged from '24, '25, are, number one, complying with the county's legal, financial, regulatory, and policy obligations, including providing mandated services, ensuring the collection of revenues, and complying with the general fund reserve policy. Two is optimizing the use of county resources with budgeted service levels for county programs informed by community priorities, improving effectiveness and efficiency where possible, and limiting the extent to which reductions in dedicated revenue are backfilled with discretionary resources. And then, looking at the third priority, this is funding new or enhanced programs that focus on the most critical and urgent needs with the priority areas identified in the survey of county residents, so the countywide focus area of addressing homelessness, its impacts, and contributing factors, including the cost and availability of housing, mental health services, and substance use treatment, and then the unincorporated focus area of improving the condition of roads. So once approved, the budget priorities are communicated to county departments to guide their budget requests, and then used to evaluate those requests and inform the funding recommendations included in the recommended budget. And that concludes the presentation with the recommended actions shown here. I'm happy to address any additional questions.
Thank you, Amanda. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I promise I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to apologize for any thunderstealing that I did. You were a trooper and rebounded excellently, and I appreciate it. And I will just say that, you know, there's an old saying that making the case louder does not improve the quality of your argument, but I don't believe that that's the situation with the county, that we are doing good work and we are making good strides. And to the extent we can get that word out there, we will start to erode that confusion as to what the county does or doesn't do, and hopefully bring our region into alignment from a values and efforts standpoint.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak on this matter?
We do not.
All right. Then in that case, I want to, again, thank Amanda and our consultant from FM3 for giving us a very thorough, some thorough information to consider in terms of our priorities, and of course, the inaugural meeting of the year. It's the right time to really focus on that, so we have a roadmap that's clear to everyone. So again, can't stress enough the import of this work. So again, thank you. Would that entertain a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved by Supervisor Rodriguez, seconded by Supervisor Hume. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, we're on to our own ranks appointments. Whip out your spreadsheets.
Okay, I do have a request before we delve into this interesting, always interesting annual exercise of spreadsheet navigation. As it relates to CACOG, I would like the board to please maybe delay for a meeting or two, consideration of how we fill that vacancy. I have some interest, and I just so happen to have a meeting scheduled this week with Mr. Corliss, so I want to at least exhaust that meeting and then bring this back to the board. So I'm hopeful my colleagues will permit that. Supervisor Kenny.
I'll just address that issue, because I, just for total transparency, I am also interested in serving on CACOG once again. We're both former CACOG members. As the, you know, past Chair, and the years of experience I've got on it, I stepped off primarily because I was going to be Chair of this board and saw the time crunch coming with other responsibilities. And so it'll be an interesting conversation to have, because I too am interested in stepping back on to CACOG.
Yeah, I'll just stress too and remind folks, I stepped away from rotating in as Chair several years ago when I was serving on the California Resources Board. So I was expected to rotate as Chair. I stepped down when I was Vice Chair, and the reason I had to do that, and it was a must, was because both CACOG meetings and the California Resource Board meetings took place on the exact same day, at the exact same time of the month. And on more than one occasion, I had to be rushed via vehicle, someone's vehicle typically, from CACOG to come pick me up at the Cal EPA building to run me over in the event that we didn't have quorum to vote. So I am interested in rejoining and kind of fulfilling what I feel I had to leave because of very limited flexibility in my schedule, but I'll just leave it there for now. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to, I'm fine waiting, I just want to express my entrance of CACOG as well. I think a lot of the issues that I am very eager to work on, really have to, are a part of this CACOG board, and so I just want to throw my interests out there as well.
Great, thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, do you want to kind of get us through this?
Yes, I will. Happy to do that. We'll start off with Adult and Aging Commission. This is typically the Chair or Chair Designee, and right now, we have Keaton Riley sitting in this position, so when your term.
If he's willing to serve.
No, he's not.
No? Okay. I don't know that I've heard, I haven't heard from any member of my staff that wants to do this. I don't know if there's any tradition behind this, Madam Clerk, that you can remind me of.
It's typically the Chief of Staff of the District.
Well, I don't want my Chief of Staff, like, chasing me around the office, asking me what the heck did I just do. We haven't had a chance to discuss it, so I'd suggest we kind of.
Continue.
Yeah, kick that can.
Can we continue this to the 28th?
Please.
Okay.
Supervisor Rodriguez, did you still have something to add?
No, oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is our Area for Agency on Aging Governing Board. This is a two-year term. The supervisors are sitting on this term automatically, and then you have your alternates. So this is where we need to take a look at the alternates. Also, going on record, that Supervisor Rodriguez is now sitting in that seat on the fourth district, but the alternates, if we can take a look at that, if you want to reappoint the alternates or you have someone new.
Supervisor Hume.
Again, I apologize. Much like the Chair, I might be a little bit uncertain as to the exact process here, but I believe we have changed my alter- but I believe we have changed my alternate to be Lisa Klotz, and that's L-E-E-S-A.
L-E-E-S-A. And what was the last name?
Klotz, K-L-O-T-Z.
Got it. We'll get that changed.
Thank you.
And if, Madam Clerk, if we can just go back to the previous appointment, I have since been given a text message by my esteemed chief, and you'll love this. She wants to make sure that I appoint or nominate Aaron Chong.
Okay. Okay, that's on record, and we will.
That's why she's a good veteran chief of staff.
Yes. Okay, so we won't continue that item, and on the record, we'll put Aaron Chong in that seat for the Adult and Aging Commission chair designee, one-year term. Going back to Area for Agency on Aging, I'll start with you, Mr. Serna. You have Cecile Nunley in there. Do you want to reappoint?
Please.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, you have Miko Sawamura.
Continue, please.
Thank you. Mr. Desmond, you have Carl Burton.
Reappoint, please.
Ms. Rodriguez, you have Megan Rose.
Can I continue this to the 28th?
Yes. And Supervisor Hume, you have Rebecca Sloan. Oh, no, Lisa Klotz, I have that. We will update that on the roster. Okay, moving on to Capital Southeast Connector Authority Board of Directors. And here, just want to point out that the alternates must be an elected official. So currently, we have Mr. Hume sitting in as the member, and Supervisor Rodriguez is the alternate, previously Supervisor Frost. Do we want to keep that the same?
Yes.
Okay, and this is an indefinite term. Moving on to Criminal Justice Cabinet. So this is the chair or chair designee. So previously, it was Supervisor Desmond. I know that even though we've had these chair, chair-designee appointments, we've had history where some of you have wanted to stay in that position, and you all have agreed to do that. So currently, who's sitting in that is, where was I? Criminal Justice. We had Supervisor Desmond as the member and Supervisor Rodriguez as the alternate. Is there a will for the board to change this?
Is, well, to the extent my opinion might matter on this, I would love to see both continue serving in the, or have Mr. Desmond keep serving that capacity, and Ms. Rodriguez join.
Yes. Okay.
Excuse, Mr. Chair? I was going to actually ask. I was actually going to ask, thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. I'm wondering if Supervisor, if you'd be willing to maybe swap, and you take it over, and I'll become the alternate. I've been on that my entire.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll.
Thank you for that.
We'll make Rodriguez the member.
Yep.
And Supervisor Desmond the alternate.
Good idea.
Okay, and this is a one-year term. Thank you. Now, we're moving on to Freeport Regional Water Authority. So selection criteria borders District 2 and 5. So this would be looking at the alternate. Right now, we have Supervisor Kennedy as the member, and then the alternate as Supervisor Frost. And this is an indefinite appointment, so we're going to add Supervisor Rodriguez into that seat. Okay? I just want to put that on the record. That is an indefinite term. Next, we have the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, formerly known as the Area Commerce and Trade Organization. This is a chair and vice chair as the alternate. So currently, we have Supervisor Serna and Kennedy. So Kennedy now is moved down, so we'll go to Supervisor Serna as the member, and then Supervisor Rodriguez would be the alternate.
That's fine. And just in case, if you all, if any one of you wanted to give up your spot, I would be more than happy to be on the GSAC.
Well, you'd be on as alternate.
As alternate.
Yeah. So that you'd rotate in presumably next year as the principal member.
Correct. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, we have the Law Library Board of Trustees. This is the chair or chair-designee. Currently, the designee is Lisa Travis. This is a one-year appointment. Do you want to reappoint her?
Please.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Could we go back to the Human Services Coordinating Council? Because that was an appointment I made as chair for Zochita Gomez, and she is interested in stepping down, so that would be a chair appointment, I believe.
Okay.
So that one is a board designee, and we haven't changed that. And so now, we will remove Sochi from that, and then we'll need someone to make an appointment.
I'm sorry, which council is this?
Human Services Coordinating Council.
Is it highlighted? Okay. Thank you. That helps.
It's an indefinite position. If there's anything here that's not.
Let's punt it to.
Continue.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just for the record, if there's anything on here that you want to take action on, please let me know.
Okay.
Okay. So our next item is the National Association of Counties, NACO. And here, we have Supervisor Desmond as the member and Supervisor Rodriguez as the alternate.
If.
I'm fine.
If Supervisor Desmond is fine continuing his service as the principal member for NACO representation, I would nominate him.
Okay.
And who's our, who's our current alternate?
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Okay.
So, I just raised a point. So we just approved me as the primary and Supervisor Hume as the alternate in CSAC. Does it make some sense to try to align the alternates? That's my only, that's my only thought.
I think so.
And I was just cued up to say I'm willing to do that.
Serve as the alternate.
So let me get this straight. So, Madam Clerk, is that Supervisor Desmond as the principal member for NACO, Supervisor Rodriguez as the alternate for NACO?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then Supervisor Desmond as the principal for CSAC, and Supervisor Hume as the alternate for CSAC?
I have, I'll have to go back to CSAC. Hang on just one second.
Which would not be what you just said.
Yeah. On CSAC right now, Supervisor Desmond is the member and Supervisor Hume is the alternate.
Here's, here's what I would say about this. I think being the alternate to those association groups is a good way to learn at your own pace, so to speak, about what they do and how they do it. So I'm fine not necessarily having the alternates aligned. So that way, people kind of, you know, colleagues get exposed to different organizations. I mean, we could revisit this next year and swap them, or have someone go from the alternate into a permanent principal position, but I think it's good to kind of spread the love around on the, on the associations.
Okay. And so we will leave Supervisor Desmond as the member and Supervisor Rodriguez as the alternate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Northern California World Trade Center Board. This is a chair as the member and vice chair as the alternate. So Supervisor Serna will be the member.
Yeah.
And Supervisor Rodriguez would be the alternate.
And just so she knows, this is not a huge time demand.
Next is the Public Financing Authority of the County of Sacramento Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District.
Wonderful.
Okay, sorry, I thought someone was calling me. Currently, right now, we have Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Desmond, and Supervisor Rodriguez as members to this board. Do we want to reappoint Supervisor Rodriguez?
I just assume keep it at that composition.
Okay. And so we will keep her on there. Regional Human Rights Fair Housing Commission Governing Board. Alternates must be elected officials on this board. So it looks like we don't have any alternates selected currently. Right now, the member is Supervisor Kennedy, oh, my apologies. Supervisor Kennedy is a member, Supervisor Rodriguez is a member, and Supervisor Hume is an alternate. Do we want to leave that rotation the same?
I, I feel comfortable with it.
I'm fine.
Mr. Hume?
Heads are nodding, yes.
Okay. Next is Sacramento Area Council of Government.
Which we're skipping.
And so currently, right now, Supervisor Desmond is the member, Supervisor Rodriguez is the heir apparent because Supervisor Frost was previously there.
That's, yeah, that's not, it's not a foreground conclusion.
Correct. And then we have Supervisor Kennedy as the alternate, Supervisor Hume as a member, and this is a four-year term. As it stands right now, we will continue this to January 28th.
That's fine.
Got it. Okay, Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency for SAFCA. Right now, we are appointing Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. And then for you, Supervisor Rodriguez, for your alternate, do you have someone in mind? Currently, the chiefs are sitting in as the alternates.
Matt Hedges would be.
Okay.
Assigned, yes. Thank you.
Okay, that's an indefinite term. Sacramento Area Sewer District, we are putting Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. That's an indefinite appointment. Moving down to Sacramento County California Capital Air Show Board of Directors, and this is a chair-designee. So I'm looking to Chair Serna. The appointed designee is Felipe Fuentes. That's the current person who's here, but it's a chair-designee.
I'm not sure I know who that individual is. I assume we keep, keep the, keep the appointment.
Next, we have Sacramento County Disaster Council. This is a chair as the member, vice chair as the alternate. So we will put Supervisor Serna as the member and Supervisor Rodriguez as the alternate.
It's the worst-named board we have.
Okay, that's a one-year term. Moving on to Sacramento County Mental Health Board. This is a chair or chair-designee position, must be a member of the Board of Supervisors. So previously, we have gone out of the rotation on this item, but I understand that we are going to need to change that during this time. So this is on you, Supervisor Serna.
Supervisor Kennedy is currently our principal representative. I'd assume.
The problem is, which I found out as we were forcing members to be termed off, that we weren't holding ourselves to the same rules. So I've done it for 10 years, and I was only supposed to do it for six.
Got you. Okay. I, I did it for, I think, six or seven years, so, again, this is feeling like a spread-the-love moment again.
Actually, I was going to ask if I, if you need someone to fill that spot, I would be more than happy.
Great. Just realize, I think there's still a, isn't there still a schedule conflict with LAFCO, or did we get rid of that?
Yes, there is.
Okay. So just realize that if you want to serve on LAFCO, it'll be difficult.
Okay. Okay. So we'll, and then also want to go on record that Supervisor Hume is the alternate on this board.
And Pat, I assume you're still willing to?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so we will list Rodriguez as the member?
The enthusiasm is just thick in here.
And thank Supervisor Kennedy for his long-term service. Okay. Sacramento County Public Facilities Financing Corporation. The chair is the president, CEO of that position, and the vice chair is the vice president. So Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Serna would be the president, and Supervisor Rodriguez would be the vice president.
With power comes great responsibility.
This is, okay. Now, we have Sacramento County Safety Net Committee. Currently, we have Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Rodriguez. This was previously Supervisor Frost, and do we want to leave it this way?
I assume so.
Okay. Moving on to Sacramento County Water Agency, we are moving Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. This is an indefinite term. Sacramento County Water Financing Authority, we are moving Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. This is an indefinite term. Sacramento Groundwater Authority, we are placing Supervisor Frost, Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. This is a four-year term, and right now, there is a, there is a designee, and the designee is Matt Seetal, and then Carrie Schmitz is the alternate designee. And do we want to leave this the same way?
I'm fine.
Okay. Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO. Supervisor Desmond is in an expiring term, and Supervisor Rodriguez, it was previously Supervisor Frost, is an expiring term, and then we have the alternate is Supervisor Hume.
Can we keep it the same? Supervisor Desmond?
I'm certainly happy to stay on LAFCO. I'm wondering if Supervisor Rodriguez wants to serve on the Mental Health Advisory Board, would she entertain maybe Supervisor Hume moving up to a primary LAFCO spot, or, I don't know. Just throwing it out there. But I'm happy to continue serving.
Supervisor Hume, are you willing to reconsider your Wednesdays that way? Okay?
Okay, so then I'm not on the mental health board, but I'll.
No, 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 no.
Oh.
She would still be on the mental health board.
Yes.
Right, but an alternate in this board.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will switch that and change.
That means you might actually have to run out from Board Meeting Room 1 into these chambers and vice versa.
Okay.
Just be forewarned.
Okay. Okay, moving on to Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, putting Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. This is an indefinite position, and there are no alternates on this board. Sacramento Metro, Metropolitan Cable Television Commission, putting Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost in this position. This is indefinite, and there are, there are alternates on this board, and currently, we have Denise Martian on this, so do you want to?
Matt Hedges.
Matt Hedges. Got it. We will update that. And next is Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor, JPA. Currently, we have Supervisor Hume as the member, and we are recommending putting Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost.
Oh, okay. So we have two members, two appointed members?
Mm-hmm, as the alternate.
Supervisor Hume.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. If she's amenable, I would propose swapping the two and make Supervisor Rodriguez the primary and me the alternate. They meet in Folsom, and one of the primary concerns is the interface of excursion rail and what happens with that, which I know is a concern to Folsom.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great idea. Thank you.
Switch that. Sacramento Public Library Authority Governing Board, we are recommending Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. And Supervisor Rodriguez, you also have a alternate that's assigned there, Tanya Kravchuk? Yes, Kravchuk?
May I continue that to 128?
Yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. This has listed Shinua Rose as the alternate in District 2. It's actually for some time, it's Bina Levkovitz.
Can you spell that for me, please?
B-I-N-A.
I'll figure it out. Thank you. Thank you. I got it. Thank you. Okay.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also will need to change my alternate to Nick Bloise.
Yes.
Nick, B-L-O-I-S-E.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Serna, are you okay with Noel Mora?
I am.
And Mr. Hume, Jennifer Loret?
I am.
Okay. And then, now we're on to Sacramento Regional Transit District, and currently Supervisor Kennedy's term is expired. Do we, what do we want to do there?
Certainly interested in continuing.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment on Sacramento Regional Transit District? If somebody is interested in vacating their seat, I would love to be on SACRT District. I will be 60% user of light rail to work, so if there's an interest in someone getting up their seat, I will be more than happy to take it.
Well, it'd be me, and I'm not.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Sacramento Transportation Authority, Sacramento Abandoned Vehicle Service Authority. Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Rodriguez, the terms have expired, so we will reappoint those terms. This board requires all of the board members to be on there. And we're putting Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. And then, let's just take a look at the alternates right now. Supervisor Serna, it looks like you're the only one with an alternate. You want to keep Mr. Abis on there as the alternate?
Yes, please.
Got it. Okay, moving down to South Sacramento Conservation Agency Joint Powers Authority. We are recommending Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. Do we want to keep it status quo? Do we want to keep it status quo? Okay. And then Tobacco Securitization Authority of Northern California. We are recommending Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. Do we want to keep that the same?
Yes.
Tobacco Securitization Authority of Southern California. We're recommending Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost. Do we want to keep that the same?
Please.
And then the Tobacco Securitization Corporation. We are putting Supervisor Rodriguez in place of Supervisor Frost, and that is an indefinite position.
Right.
And that concludes own ranks.
Take a deep breath. Okay. Thank you for guiding us through that.
Of course.
Appreciate it. So I trust you've taken, you've made a list of things that we need to revisit on February 8th.
Absolutely.
All right, very good.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
And maybe it's a question for David. We had a brief discussion about the status of the two-by-four with the city of Sacramento. I know that's never been incorporated into this own ranks appointments, but is that, are we looking for, is that going to continue? Question number one. And if so, will we have, will this board have to decide who serves on that?
This board would need to decide if that was to continue. When I was working with the previous city manager, we were waiting for the new year to come around. I guess today we may find out what the new city manager may want to do. I've heard that there's interest in it from the city side. I'm not sure that I've heard interest from the county side.
Okay. Got it. Yes, I did hear from Councilmember Dickinson that he's been appointed to the four-by-two. And just for the record, I'm, I'd be happy to step back and yield to another board member if he or she would like to serve on that.
At this point, we've made no commitments to.
Right. Do we even know that, I mean, the four-by, the quote-unquote four-by-two is really a composition that's artifact of the past mayor. So we have, there's a new mayor. Do we even know the disposition of the new mayor in terms of wanting to keep that composition?
I have not talked to the new mayor.
Okay. I think, I think that's probably the first thing we ought to do. So.
And just to your point, this document that Flo's been talking to, there's bylaws and such that pull this together. There's no requirement that we have the four-by-two. Even in the partnership agreement, there's no reference to that. And so it's just something that was asked to from the previous mayor.
Great.
Also, should we go down and have that conversation? My recommendation would be that we go back to the original formation of a two-by-two. Having four people sit on one side of the table and two on the other is a bit of an imbalance of power.
Agreed.
Is there interest for me to have that conversation?
Let's.
The only reason I bring it up is I do know that the mayor has already made appointments to this four-by-two based on the statements from another council member, so.
I have some thoughts. I won't share them here, but I will share them offline about what I think is probably a more effective constitution for it. Some of it, it's already been mentioned, but I'd like to put some refinements on the table, if I could.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I just want to ask the county executive and the chair, are you okay with me adding that board to? Okay. I'm hearing. Thank you.
Loudest whisper when asked and answered, I think.
Yeah. We track it on, we do track it. I just want to make sure I get clear direction. We do track it, but thank you. Okay. Moving on to Item 53. This is your nominations to boards and commissions. You are continuing to January 28th the Community Review Commission, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Human Services Coordinating Council, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Public Health Advisory Board, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to February the 4th Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Kasumnas Area Planning Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Sacramento County Youth Commission. Continuing to February 25th Cemetery Advisory Commission, County Service Area 4B Slough House, Wilton Kasumnas, County Service Area 4C Delta, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, and the Veterans Advisory Committee. Your first item is Adult and Aging Commission?
Chiefs are recommending reappointment of Don Angelo and nomination of Sharon Jennings and Matthew Rosenberg. And please continue the remainder to February 25th.
And would you like to waive the process for Don Angelo?
Uh, no.
Okay. County Planning Commission?
District Two, reappoint Joe Devlin and waive the process.
Unanimous vote. And then to Supervisor Hume?
Reappoint Joe Phil Borha and waive the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote. Okay. And then Supervisor Rodriguez?
I'm going to continue to the January 28th meeting.
Thank you. Make sure I got everyone. Disability Advisory Commission?
Chiefs are recommending nomination of Trimmel Watson. And continue the remainder to February 25th, please.
Thank you. Elk Grove Kasumnas Cemetery District Supervisor Hume?
Please reappoint Jessica Green.
Thank you. Fair Oaks Cemetery District Supervisor Desmond?
Please reappoint Patricia Vogel.
And Supervisor Rodriguez?
Can I continue this to the next meeting, please?
Okay. I have a note to continue to February 25th.
Oh, yes.
You okay with that?
Thank you for the correction.
Great. Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council?
Please continue to February 4th.
Thank you. First Five Sacramento Commission?
Chiefs recommend the nomination of Nicole Kravitz-Wortz.
Thank you. Galt Arno Cemetery District Supervisor Hume?
Please reappoint Charles Heacock.
Got it. In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee?
Chiefs recommend the nomination of Suzanne McDonald. And continue the remainder to February 25th, please.
Got it. Local Child Care Planning and Development Council?
Chiefs recommend nomination of Natalie Dunaway and Brenda Laurie. And please continue the remainder to February 28th. 28th?
To January 28th?
No.
Or February 4th?
February 28th. I don't know if that's even.
There's a February 25th?
Right. That's, I think, this is a typo.
Okay. We'll do February 25th. I had a note for February 4th, but we'll go with your recommendation.
Sometime in February.
We'll do February 28th, 25th. Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission Supervisor Hume?
Continue to February 4th.
Oh, thank you. And that concludes your nominations. On to county executive comments.
Thank you, Flo. I just wanted to say Happy New Year to all of you, and congratulations to Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Rodriguez for winning the next, your term for the next four years. Also wanted to thank Supervisor Kennedy for the last year of being chairmanship. I think we've had a good relationship working through that, and it's been working very well. And thank you, as that's my first year of being your county executive, and you've provided a tremendous amount of guidance and help and assistance to that. So I also look forward to working with Supervisor Serna. We've already had some conversations about maybe doing things a little bit differently, but I'm looking forward to his leadership on that portion of it. Just so you know, as we enter in 2025, I think 2024 was a fantastic year, and we did a lot of great things. We continue to do great things. Looking forward to 2025 as we move into it. Know that myself, the executive team behind me, your department heads, and all of your staff stand behind you and ready to implement the policies that this board decides on, and looking forward to that. The last thing I would bring up is, and I think you've heard me say this before, is 2025 is going to be another historical moment or historical year, the county incorporated in 175 years ago. So we are celebrating our demi, semi-septennial. Did I?
By February, it's going to roll off your tongue.
It's just, it's never going to work. But I'll keep trying. But, so we have a whole host of different activities. We've recently sent out to many of your partners and constituents, not constituents, your partners and leaders in other organizations, a New Year's Day card. And if the board is looking for us to send that out to anybody else, please let me know. And we'll also be, we have a couple of different activities happening throughout the year. So come February 18th is the official day, and we'll be doing things throughout the year. So thank you.
Mike Barnbaum, you're going to help us on social media get that word out, right? About 175 years?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right. I have a few of my colleagues in the queue. Start with Supervisor Desmond.
And one of those activities presumably will be a spelling contest to see who can spell that word as well as pronounce it.
It's very easy to spell. The difficulty is saying it.
I just wanted to congratulate and welcome Supervisor Rodriguez. Very much look forward to working with you. And we have adjoining districts and I think a constituency that is very alike in terms of just kind of their outlook and some of their needs in Sacramento County. So just welcome and just look forward to working with you. And want to welcome our new chair and taking the helm this year. Look forward to that. And even though Supervisor Kennedy will no longer be in the middle, his indomitable wit will still be centered on this board. I'm sure of that. So thank you.
Supervisor Rodriguez?
For Supervisor Kennedy, I want to thank you for your leadership last year. I watched most of the meetings, and I learned a lot of really good tips from just being at the, at the seat. And so I want to thank you for that. And also, I look forward to working with you all. I'm very excited about this year. Looking forward to working with our county staff and also celebrating the 175th year of this county, as well as Chair Serna. I look forward to working closely with you and learning from you, and I, thank you. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. I'll just add that I'm, this is the entry into my 15th year serving on this board. And there have been wholesale changes to the composition now. And this is by no means a adverse mark on my past composition of the board or with my other colleagues in years past. But I just have a certain confidence with this group of five people that I feel very strongly about, that I think, again, given some of the words that were offered today by both Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Rodriguez, really give me a lot of hope that this board will continue to excel in terms of not just our collective service, but our friendship, our understanding of each other's issues, what's important to everyone's respective districts and the constituents therein. What we haven't really experienced, I think, in some time, thankfully, is a lot of, you know, contention. Sometimes it would get personal in years past, and I'm talking a long time ago. But again, just for what it's worth from my perspective with my tenure on this board, I just feel like this is a collection of some really, really good people and dedicated people and people that really want to make a difference in service to others. So I'll just leave it there. Thank you. Next item.
You're going to recess to close session, but you also have an adjournment.
There are comments from the rest of the board.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were the last comment as the chair.
Yeah, I know that we do have an adjournment from Supervisor Kennedy. I do also have an adjournment. Do you want to offer yours first?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sonny Chong passed away December 24th at the age of 76. Sonny was a practicing dentist in Sacramento for over 30 years. He was an active member of our community in ways that touched countless lives, particularly those in the AAPI community, dedicating his life to advocating for equality, education, and opportunity for all. Sonny was a chair of Capitol, the Council of Asian Pacific Islanders Together for Advocacy and Leadership, and on the CSUS University Foundation, longtime chair of the Board of Directors of Asian Resources, chair of the Sheriff Outreach Community Advisory Board representing District Two, member of the Sacramento FBI Citizens Academy Alumni Association, and a lifetime member of the Chinese-American Council of Sacramento and the Sacramento Chinese Cultural Foundation. And of all his accomplishments, he was maybe the most proud to serve many years on the California State Fair Board. If you knew Sonny at all, you knew how excited he was at fair time. A proud native of San Francisco's Chinatown, Sonny was an avid 49ers fan, and he never forgot his Chinatown roots. He leaves a legacy as a mentor, a friend, and steadfast ally to all those who had the privilege to work beside him. Sacramento County and particularly South Sacramento have lost a great champion, a truly good human being, and a kind man. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for those words, Supervisor Kennedy. I too want to offer an adjournment here in, with respect and in memory of President Jimmy Carter. Jimmy Carter, the only centenarian ex-president, died on December 29th, 2024. James Earl Carter Jr., simply known as Jimmy, entered state politics as a naval officer for seven years and was eventually elected as the governor of Georgia, where he attracted attention by emphasizing ecology, efficiency in government, and the removal of racial barriers. Jimmy Carter served as the 39th President of the United States from 1977 to 1981, where he implemented clean energy and conservation policies and practices, including the installation of solar panels on the White House, instituting recycling programs across federal government departments, enacting environmental protection legislation, and establishing the Department of Energy to ensure an environmentally sustainable world. In recognition of Carter's commitment to peace, democracy, human rights, and humanitarian values that respect all people, he was awarded the United Nations Human Rights Prize in 1998, the Presidential Medal of Freedom in 1999, and the Nobel Peace Prize in 2002. His ongoing work included promoting democracy, protecting human rights, and alleviating human suffering in the U.S. and globally through the Carter Center, which has helped improve life for people in more than 80 countries by resolving conflicts, preventing diseases, ensuring fairness in elections, and improving mental health care. Since 1984, President and Mrs. Carter were champions of affordable, decent housing for all, donating their time and leadership each year to build and improve homes through Habitat for Humanities Jimmy and Roslyn Carter Work Project. Over the course of more than 30 years, the Carters worked alongside 106,100 volunteers in 14 countries to build, renovate, and repair more than 4,417 homes, and inspired millions more through their dedication and advocacy. Former President Carter turned 100 years old on October 1st, 2024, becoming the oldest